Twenty-four hours and five. For the twenty-two to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We continue to make progress on Twenty-Fifth Street. I think since the last time we discussed this project, we've worked the deck on the bridge as well as the approaches. Most of the utility infrastructure.
Water sewer, storm sewer, south of the bridge has been completed. They did pour a small portion of the west side of Twenty-Fifth Street from Twenty-Fifth Street North late last week and probably will be pouring more of that this week as we move forward. So with that in answer, any questions you might have?
What do you think? The bridge is reopened?
Don't have a good idea, Dave. It's probably one of the later things that will be open. Probably going to use the bridge, the new road bridge for the required trail while we rebuild the pedestrian bridge and trail down in the park.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be a while yet.
All right.
Dennis' plan is still, if everything goes right, for the project to wrap this fall?
I think so. You know, things are looking good with the utilities in now and they're starting to work on the paving. So I would hope that before the snowballs get here that we would have the street ready for opening. We may be still dealing with some of the landscape and some of those issues yet beyond then. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you for the update on Twenty-Fifth Street project. That brings us to a town hall meeting, receiving comments on the Northeast Nebraska Solid Waste Coalition budget, the rates, and the fiscal year pending, ending September 30th, 2013. Mr. Gates, would you present that?
That's your honor. A pretty simple budget, not many changes from the prior year. However, this is a requirement of the interlocal agreement with the Southern Solid Waste Coalition. There's a town hall meeting held every year in the three largest communities. So there's going to be one of these in Norfolk, one in Fremont, one in Columbus. And the boards approved this preliminary budget at their meeting last month. Like I said, there's very little change between this budget and the prior year budget. The budget, the operating budget, again, is on page 164 of the agenda packets. Probably the biggest thing you'll notice on the revenue side of the budget was a big increase in balance brought forward. That increased about $368,000 or $69,000. And that's simply result of operations. Hidden substantial cash flow, so on a basis of a year-to-year. Use fees increased about 2 percent. That's because we're budgeting a 4 percent increase in tonnage. Like the budget, it increases tonnage every year, so we're sure we don't exceed our expenditures if tonnage does go up. And that, things are pretty much the same on the revenue side. When you get down to the expenditure side, that's on page 166 of the agenda packets, where that starts. You might notice that the personnel cost actually went down. Part of my reason for this was a decrease in group insurance cost. Sheil Shukai and Gary Land worked with the Boushres, Dave Boushres, the main scale house operator.
And they resulted in some creative things they did with that MOU that reduced the cost of group insurance, which is the first time we've seen that thing decrease in the budget as long as I can remember. So that's a favorable, very favorable thing. Disposal fees are up about 2 percent, but that's just consistent with the 4 percent increase in budgeted tonnage. About half of the fee waste connections gets as a fixed fee, so you'd expect the rates to go up. The disposal fees go up about half of what the tonnage changes. Very little changes in any of the other items. If you get down to the next budget, which is the closure, post-closure fund budget, that starts on page 171 in your agenda packets. That's where we're accumulating the money to take care of the landfill after it closes and do the closure. This fund should be growing every year, and that's what it's doing. Beginning fund balance increases $410,000. Our transfer in increases about 4 percent. That's where we're taking money out of the operating fund and setting aside in here for the closure, post-closure funding. That's consistent with the tonnage increase. And then you'll see ending balance increasing about $423,000. These are invested in long-term treasuries. So a very simple budget, rarely a few changes from prior year. But this is a requirement of the, this town hall meeting is a requirement of the interlocal agreement. Be happy to answer any questions.
Randy, probably the biggest question that I hear from the public out there is, are tipping fees going to increase or are garbage?
They're going to stay the same like they have for, I suppose, about a decade now. I mean, that ain't changing that.
Due to the fact that this is a town hall meeting, are there any questions from the audience or comments? Hang on. I thank you, Mr. Gates, for your presentation. Due to the fact that I'd like to make a change in the agenda, take the chairman's prerogative, and I'd like to move item 44 up at this point in time prior to any public hearings relating to any other public hearings. So I'd like to have Dennis Smith present the paving district item, item 44 on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 5220.
Second that. Ordinance 5220 would create paving district number 503 would be the paving of Washington Avenue from just west of First Street, west of Fourth Street where the paving on Fourth Street ends. This item was discussed with a subcommittee of elected officials about 10 days ago. Their recommendation was to bring this forward to the council for approval. This paving district is a remonstrable paving district, so the property owners adjacent to the project that would have the assessable costs will be able to remonstrate against this district if they so desire. As such, staff would recommend that the ordinance be approved on all three readings. Would answer any questions anyone might have?
How long on the, how long are we talking when you assess the value of the lot? How long are they going to be, how much time do they have to pay back that assessment?
Our typical, our typical timing on paving assessments is a 10-year amortization.
Has anybody heard much from the property owners?
To best my knowledge, we have not had any, any direct input from any of the property owners at this point in time.
Dennis, maybe just can you review a little bit that, what you talked about, the remonstrance?
Okay.
How that process works, just for the public knowledge?
The, what will happen is, is after the ordinance is passed and approved, there'll be a notice in the paper, which will start a 21-day period. If we get petitions or letters from 50 percent of the property adjoining the street or more, then the district will, will not go forward. If we do not receive those remonstrances or those letters against it, then the district will go forward and will do the engineering design and move forward with the paving letting.
Thank you.
Can I ask Dennis a question?
Certainly.
Dennis, the, and it's, it's, you said a majority, that's on a frontage footbait, a foot-frontage basis, not on the number of properties. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's based on the, it's based on the footage each property has adjacent to the street.
Any further comments or discussion? I have a short title, please.
An ordinance creating paving district number 503 in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, ordering the construction of street improvements therein and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in affirmative. Ordinance 5220 carries on first reading.
Your honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5220 on second and third.
Moved in second, we pass ordinance 5220 on second and third. Please vote.
All council members voting in affirmative. Ordinance 5220 carries on second and third reading.
Okay, that brings us to public hearings. First public hearing is related to request of Tom Claussen and Brad Tunick regarding the alter conditional use permit by the planning commission and shall be constructed and conducted informally. I'd like to set out a few ground rules for this public hearing, if I may. And each witness shall present his or her testimony in narrative fashion and shall state his, his or her name and address prior commencing through his or her testimony. City council members should not be bound by the strict rules of evidence in conducting of the hearing and may admit and give probative effect of the evidence which possesses probative value, commonly accepted by reasonable prudent persons. The city council may question any witness at any time during the proceedings. The order of the proceeding shall be conducted. The following shall be followed. I'd like to introduce Trent Howard as a prevention manager for the city of Norfolk. Presentation of evidence by the witnesses, Mr. Claussen and Mr. Tunick. Presentation by the evidence of witnesses by others opposed to the permit that has been granted. Presentation of evidence and witnesses by alter permit applicant. Rebuttal evidence by Mr. Claussen or Mr. Tunick, if desired. And then following that, a rebuttal evidence by alter corporation, if desired. That will be the format, the ground rules that I'd like to have followed this evening. And with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Brent Howard.
In regards to the alter appeal, I do have some hearing notes, just to recap some of the history on this. Your honor and counsel, this started out with the Alter Trading Corporation filing an application for a conditional use permit, seeking a permit to operate a salvage yard and a scrap shredder on their property at 500 West Washington Avenue. That is presently included in the I-2 zoning district. The salvage yard has been operated on this property since approximately 1958, and it presently constitutes a legal non-conforming use under the provisions of city code. Adding a scrap shredder to the existing operation constitutes the expansion of a legal non-conforming use, which necessitates the granting of a conditional use permit for the salvage yard operation and the placement and operation of the shredder. The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 22nd, 2012, receiving input and data from the applicant and the general public concerning the conditional use permit. The planning commission conducted an additional hearing on July 3rd, 2012, to receive additional input and data from the applicant and the general public. On July 3rd, 2012, the planning commission approved the conditional use permit by a vote of 7-0. On July 18th, 2012, Tom Claussen and Brad Tunick filed an appeal from the planning commission's approval of the conditional use permit to the applicant. Pursuant to Norfolk City Code Section 27-56, the city council may, following a public hearing, reverse, affirm, or modify the decision of the planning commission. The city acknowledges that there were multiple questions that were raised during the conditional use permit process. Many of those questions are federal and state issues and are addressed by the conditions in the permit that says that they have to follow all city, state, and federal regulations. The activity is highly regulated by various state and federal regulations and authorities. Some of the questions raised are addressed by provisions already existing in the state and city code. Some of the concerns that were expressed really represent the best management practices that are a benefit to alter, the city, and to all the neighbors. Some of the concerns addressed resulted in specific conditions being included in the conditional use permit. Some of those concerns raised are going to be addressed in the process of issuing necessary stormwater permits that fall under the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System to discharge, which includes all significant industrial users such as alters. The council has addressed the dust concerns. We did have some dust concerns down there, and by passing ordinance number 5220 at today's meeting, this puts into place the process there. The legitimate issues expressed have been addressed through various state statutes, federal and state regulations, and local ordinances and provisions that I mentioned earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. I guess that moves us up to the presentation of the applicants, of Mr. Claussen and Mr. Tunick.
Hello. All right, I got respectfully asked, and I got five issues that I'd like to bring up. First of all.
Excuse me, would you please cite your name and address, please?
Brad Tunick, 412 Northwestern Avenue, 315 Northwestern Avenue, and 404 Northwestern Avenue.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to start on this hours. I have seven grandkids. One of them is, yes, deaf and handicapped, and they're all young. But the issue is where this is located at, the shredder. I'm, actually, I do not mind improvements and stuff around the community. It's nice. Anything I can see to help out the neighborhood. I've been there for 17 years. And the way I was looking at this location, they pretty much, their boundary, 300, what they're calling their boundary line for 300 foot, that's pretty much right at my door. It's just, I know, I do know, and I did some research, that the shredder itself is going to take a lot to fill it, yes. But the location, I would like to see it moved towards the west and south more, if they can get it out of the neighborhood. Because where they got it located now, it is pretty much in the backyard of everybody. I don't know if the location means really that much to them or how it should be, but in consideration for the neighborhood and stuff, if they haven't built or done anything or did any kind of construction, it sure would be nice to see that moved towards the west and the south for a lot of good reasons and for people. My other statement I'd like to make is, I, you know, I've always wanted to see what this machine is like and what it does for preventive for the explosions, the dust. Yeah, I did go to Council Bluff, and I seen it, but that's an old machine. You know, you're talking 30, 35 years old. Now, a new one I haven't seen, I can understand the fact that OSHA and, you know, something new like that is quite a piece of equipment, you know. I work on cars, and electronics in them is just phenomenal anymore. And my concern is, I went to watch, before they knew I was there, in Alters. There is no inspections that I've seen of. There is no checking the vehicles out. There is no, nothing, looking at anything when they're going in and out of there. And is it going to be mandatory to have each and every vehicle, that, anything that's hauled in inspected? Or do they just get to drive on through? Because I, I watched it. Next, this entrance. There's a big issue about Washington, about it's going to be paved and the money that they're going to spend and what's going on. Of course, we're traveling right through a residential area, and of course, there's where I wrote on one side, residential on the other. It'd be so feasible. When I'm looking at this, there is no reason why they cannot come in from the south and go into the north into their property. It would save so much confusion on traffic, cost of money, cost of city, everything. The fact is, it's probably be more feasible because of all the room they got there. They got seven acres. And if you're coming seven acres and you got, coming off Monroe straight back, I don't really see a whole lot of stopping from paving from Monroe over. That should prevent a lot of truck traffic. It's so much feasible more. It's like, why would you want to come through and irritate everybody on Washington? Especially, the traffic's bad enough the way it is. I mean, it is backed up to First Street, yeah? This way, traffic would not be so backed up. You could have the trucks coming in from the south and probably the cars and vehicles coming in from the west, from the east. I think that could be solved pretty easy. Next thing I got on the agenda is the hours. Yeah, that 300 radius is right there in my front yard. It's, it's nice. I mean, it's sure, you either live with the junk, which it looks terrible, or you take and live with all the noise. Well, now the hours, I, we went from seven to five and then six to six, and now seven to 10. Maybe I think we should take and put some kind of a, stretch around the days that they're working, or the hours, you know. And again, the new core is awesome, and having companies like this come in and improve Norfolk is fantastic. I agree with that 100 percent, but there should be some kind of a regulation for the hours. Could you imagine, like, until 10 o'clock at night, you're hearing it? I, when I went to Council Bluff, after I got done visiting, yeah, I met some nice people there. Guy gave me a tour of it. Hey, just so happened that the machine was down. Well, it didn't take long. I went and visited neighbors, about 20 of them. And I went from house to house, drove around in my big old black pickup. I wasn't, and it really was nice about it. And I talked to people that's been there from 30 years to five years. You know, I heard five explosions, you know, and, no, it wasn't like shaking my ground when I was right there. But I got people that I've talked to, and it does shake their house, and it does rattle the windows, and it does take thing. He says, here's one guy says to me, well, it shakes my house, but nothing's come off my shelves yet. Okay, well, I know there's a difference in it, because that's a 35-year-old machine, I suppose, compared to a new one. But that's still the point and the principle. When they're this close, and this is actually, not how close they were. I didn't have no awesome equipment to measure for my shower and everything, but the fact is, you do have your explosions. And I did hear them personally. Like, only thing I can tell you is, I can't prove it because there's no way besides go for yourself sometime over there. The, being part of this, is when you look at the situation, and there's no reason, we, we asked to move, but they want to be by the railroad tracks. Fantastic. You know, I think it's great. Railroad's right there. Yes, the cars will be moving. They won't be sitting behind my shop so much, you know. But the thing is, if you've got this big old piece of iron sitting here shredding up material, why does it have to be so close to the housing district, and why can't we move back? And the concerns for the waste and where they are, water. I'm sure the city's going to make sure that there's plenty of hydrants, there's plenty of water. If they have a fire, controlling it, I would sure assume so. So it doesn't matter. If there's nothing in there now, I just don't see no reason why you can't move it this way. You're going to make so many more people happy. You're going to save money from paving that old street right there. Of course, paving anyway, that'd be great, you know, for the people, but it's just the fact, it's just right in the middle of the housing, and you got all this extra area and hours, you know, and what if they do? Because of the new core. So it's going to be great for new core and them, great for them. Now, let's say they do have to work extra hours, and you guys did give them permission to do it. Although, you know, majority of the people don't live around there anyway, yeah? I'll hear that machine running. I wish I can actually see one, which I'm going to do. I'll go up to New Orleans sometime and check it out. But fact is, when it's in your backyard, it makes a heck of a difference when you're going to be another 300 foot away. If you've got seven acres of property, why can't you adjust a little bit? And I don't, just see anything wrong with it at all. And the hours, I, I can understand them. I, it'd be hard to feed this machine. It takes a lot of trucks, a lot of, I don't know how fast this can eat a car up, but I bet it's pretty darn fast. So you figure just one piece of equipment like that and shred a car, that iron steel, you can just imagine how much it's going to take to feed this thing, because it's hungry all day long. So if they do run to 10 o'clock, at least they can be over there. Yes, I like their ideas of the, the way the machine can move and block the somber of it. Who knows how much it really does. I'm not sure. I don't know if anybody does besides these guys that see it. I do business there.
I believe that you've addressed the location, you've addressed the noise. Do you have another concern?
Well, I got one more. I am concerned about this, what if there is a fire, or if there's something going on? Is, is there going to be enough there to handle it? You know, for water purposes, hydrants, all this kind of stuff, you know, concerns? There was a fire out there at Council Bluff, and yeah, I seen some pictures of it, because the neighbors took pictures of it. I don't know who had the fire for hot, positively for sure. They just know that there was a fire. They had to come around and clean up the neighborhood. That is my issues right there, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Have you made yourself familiar with the conditional use permit itself and the conditions that apply?
Yes, I've been looking at it and reading it and.
I believe the concerns you have about the fire suppression have been addressed?
Yeah. Yes, I do realize how about that. Everything else has been addressed. Yeah. Yes, I do realize how about that, everything else has been addressed, and I do appreciate your time and just listening to me, and just made me think more, since I was, I'll do my yard work, you know, and you're right there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is Mr. Clausen here? No. All right, in that regard, then, I would, is there anyone else here that presented any opposition to the granting of the special use permit or conditional use permit? Seeing or hearing none, I entertain alter mental in making a rebuttal.
Your Honor, mayors of the, or members of the council, Mark Fitzgerald, I'm a lawyer in Norfolk. I represent Alter. For the record, I will introduce the folks from Alter that are here with me this evening. That has been my role at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearings, where the planning and zoning folks have had a chance to actually hear from the, from the Alter folks who are going to run this facility as opposed to lawyers. With me this evening is Jay Rabinevitz. Mr. Rabinevitz is the Chief Operating Officer of Alter. The Regional Director of Operations, David Snyder, who has been involved in this project from the inception, is here this evening. Robert Rowland is the new facility manager at Norfolk. He is a member of this community. And then a longstanding member of this community is an executive account, or an account representative for Alter, is Rick Mahatchek. Those members of the Alter team are here this evening. I think after me, Jay will address specific things that Mr. Tunick stated, and tell you where Alter is, and give you kind of an overall statement of, of the project. For my part, I just want to address a couple things. Number one is that there were over three hours of public hearing on this matter before the Planning and Zoning Commission. There was over two hours on May twenty-two, and then there was another hour of public hearing on July three. All of these things that Mr. Tunick has mentioned this evening were addressed by various folks, and were actually resolved, I think, in large part by the CUP that was ultimately approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The, in addition to those public hearings, the Planning and Zoning Commission asked Alter to participate in a meeting with the neighbors, and they did. On May thirty-one, I think it was at least an hour-long meeting, Alter representatives, myself, lawyers for the neighbors and the neighbors, discussed with city officials, members of your planning and zoning team, folks involved in this process about specific concerns that the neighbors had with regard to the Alter expansion, the shredder in particular. The single most mentioned item at that meeting was dust control and traffic. I think the city council has gone a long way in addressing those concerns with the paving district five oh three and ordinance fifty-two twenty. With regard to fire suppression, by the time we had had that meeting on May thirty-one, I believe Mr. Tunick had already been to the Alter facility, and lots of his concerns had been, I think, properly allayed by going there and seeing how it actually looked and how it actually worked. And he was not against the facility as an idea. He was simply interested in making sure that it operated in the best interests of, of the neighbors surrounding it. So the fire that he mentioned was not an Alter fire. There, there was no fire that Mr. Tunick is aware of that was an Alter fire. Is that true?
Sure.
All right. And, and fire suppression was, in fact, addressed by the CUP, as were several of the other things. At this point, I'm gonna ask Mr. Rabinevitz to speak. He is the Chief Operating Officer of Alter. He can tell you about the hours of operation, why they need to be as stated in the CUP, and where Alter is now, and what it intends to do here. Thanks. Thank you. Any questions?
Good evening. Thank you again. Nice to see everyone. I appreciate that the, that the conditional use permit has addressed a number of these issues. The fire suppression issue is as important to us as anyone in the community. It's our equipment, it's our people, it's our environment as well. So I can assure you with the city's help, I think we will have that nailed down tight. That's important to everyone on the, on the concept. Fifty-two twenty will address the street. I hope in the interim, the fact that we're watering and trying to take a little care of it is helping somewhat in the meantime, but it's certainly something that, that, that we appreciate from the neighbor's standpoint, and are doing what we can to help, just as a, as a good neighbor. The street's in pretty tough shape, but we think now we have a proposal approved this evening that, that could get us moving forward there as well. As far as the hours of operation, again, it's, it's weeks like we're having right now that need to spread a time. We don't intend on running those late hours. It's not in our best interest either, but we need the flexibility to have hours to run, as we've discussed in the past. This condition we have right now, these electric, these electric needs and requirements due to the temperatures outside and these extraordinary conditions, we want to have air conditioners in our building and in our homes. We need to be on voluntary and curtailment type programs to do shift the hours of operation within a window, and we are, we are just trying to make sure that we can run. We're not, we're not trying to run all night. There's no, there's no intention of that. It takes about twenty seconds to run a car, by the way. It does grind it up into fifth-sized pieces in about twenty seconds. I, I think that the size of the investments is we have a certain amount of hours that we need to have available. We don't ever want to run them. We anticipate running a regular straight one-shift operation if all goes well, and, and we will be as good a neighbor as we can be. I will give you my business card. You can call me if they're bugging and making it crazy, but we do need the hours in order to justify the expansion of the facility. The, on the last note, as far as how do, how are we gonna be a good neighbor and move the machine? I will take a look, as we start poking holes in the ground, doing the geotechnical side of the site, we can look at it. I can tell you, it does make a difference turning the machine in what direction it sits, and what, what faces the neighborhood. The buildings are a great sound wall. We've got tremendous amount of data walking around with sound meters. We know what, where the noise comes from when they are running, and we do everything we can to make sure that we address it in the, in the most positive way for everyone. There's no, there's no bearing on us doing anything. It's just gonna make you miserable, because you're just gonna call Robert all the time. No, no. And then I'll call Robert, and we'll all just keep calling Robert. The, the goal here is to put a facility that's gonna last a period, test the time, have good neighbor relationships, and make sure we go forward. As far as your, if you'd like to see another one, I'd be happy to Des Moines, Waterloo, Eau Claire, similar in size to what we're, what we're looking at here, all in communities. They're two thousand six, five, two thousand five, two thousand six machines, so they're relatively current. You know, like everything, every year they get better, but they're relatively current installations on about the same size parcels of property, right in communities as well, or close proximity. And we have neighbors, whether it's communities or businesses, you know, it's, we have the same issues with trying to be a good neighbor everywhere. I will point out, one of the issues with sound in our business is, as you said, the shredder wasn't running, yet you heard five explosions. If I tell you how often that we hear with that, well, we weren't running, we were off for a power interruption, but yet there's explosions. There's a steel mill right there. They hump cars in your backyard, you know, for the railroad. So we just want to make sure that, as long as we all know when there's an issue, we want to make sure we deal with what's really the problem, and we'll deal with it. But so, that's the best commitment I can give you on the noise and the concern there, is that we're here. Come and find us. We'll, we'll answer what we can, and we'll do what we can to correct it. Are there any questions from the city council? I've addressed the planning commission, but I have not addressed this group.
I had an opportunity to talk with Tom Clausen. He had called me, since he's not here tonight. His concerns are real similar, but the one thing you kept going over was the hours, you know, the hours of production, hours of production. I know you addressed that, addressed that to us, about like with today's temperatures and stuff and having to operate at night, but could you address it a little more, like when you're, when you're seeing peak, you know, cars being dropped off and whatnot? What's, you know, what's the reasoning behind, you know, having to run till ten o'clock? Is it because you're gonna have, you're gonna be operating till that time, or is it just in case you need the time, or is it just, you know, what is the?
It's really just if we need the time. If the hours, if something happens, you have an outage that says we can't run from ten till five for a week. Somewhere or another, I have to make up some hours to try and keep and pay the light bills at the end of the month. It is not a planned occurrence. We run normal business hours as often as we can. The rest of the plant will be on a normal cycle, you know, so the, there really is about shredder hours and available, so many ton an hour, it's all it can do, and it needs hours. If we could say we can work within here without any interruption, we probably could cap it, but we can't say that in our next step. And this whole process to go to the utility, I really found out, nail them down as to what, what is available. We are interruptible power because of the size of consumer we are, which says if the city calls up and says, hey, we got brownouts going on, it's too hot, we pull the plug and shut down. We voluntarily cap off, and it's on an hour's notice, and we just stop working. You know, it's a, it's a service to the community. It's part of the condition of, of having the kind of voltage we need, and we, and we do what we can with that. But all we're asking is that if that were the case, if it were in the best interest of the community to do it, we need to have the flexibility, meet our commitments as well to our customers and consumers, you know, New Core's depending on us every month. Say, we shut the lights off, I can't catch any scrap this month. It, it puts us all in a bind.
I had a question, kind of in that same vein. First, I wanted to make a comment, kind of compliment, that from my appearance, it seems that Alters has been very good to work with and trying to be a good neighbor, so I appreciate that. Secondly, you, you mentioned some of the other facilities that you have that already have shredders. Could you give us an idea on the number of occurrences in those facilities that you've worked past your regular operating hours, to kind of give us an idea that it is the exception rather than the rule?
Waterloo never has it. They don't have electric problems. They're off by the end of the day, like clockwork, and they don't ever see it. Eau Claire has one of the highest utility rates in the company, and because of that, the utility doesn't like to take them offline. So they're the last one off, because it's the highest rate in the community. So they let them run, so they don't often go, go beyond. Well, it's all economics. The utility says, well, if we gotta pull somebody's plug, let's go to the most expensive guy last. So they don't have a tremendous amount, but they do on occasion when they're behind. Last week, they had to run all day on a Saturday. That's unusual for them to have to do. They're generally Monday to Friday. They're usually, they start early in the morning, but they're over by, you know, four or five o'clock in the afternoon, almost like clockwork. But I can also tell you at the same time in Council Bluff, they've been on serious curtailments for the last few weeks. This week has been relatively calm, all things considered, but off for the majority of the daytime hours. They've been running from one AM. They have no time restrictions. They've run from one AM till as long as they can till somebody pulls a plug, which has been about ten o'clock in the morning. That facility has the flexibility to do that, yet I, that I'm aware of, we haven't had any neighbor complaints, and we've had to do it just as a matter of necessity to keep the, that city's really struggling for, for energy availability. So I, I would tell you that it's not a normal occurrence. It's not something, these have been just exceptional times. We very seldom ever see it during the winter months at all. So oddly, it's predominantly a summer issue.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Very well.
Sir, someone else from Alter wishes to speak to the issues? Guess in that regard, then, I still do have a couple questions. I thought possibly someone else would address. We certainly understand the crisis hour situation, that you sometimes you would have to have some extended hours, but could you really identify what normal operating hours are?
Sure. I, I would, I would base normal operating hours from seven to five o'clock, or seven to four-thirty. Robert's really here. We haven't, it really depends, in large part, again, on what the utility company says, and we are working with them closely. That is the next step in this process, to pin them down, is exactly how much power and what hours are best suited for them and for us. So I can, I can give more color to that, hopefully, in the next week to ten days, as they near that, that timeline, and I'd be happy to share it with the neighbors. We're first shift operation, as often as possible, daylight hours.
Thank you. And I guess another thing I'd like to have you address is what precautions or steps have been taken for inspection of incoming scrap, you know, so we don't get the gas tanks, the propane tanks, et cetera, that might come into this facility?
Completely agree. I'm also responsible for the entire safety and environmental concerns for the companies, or the corporation, for the thirty-eight operating facilities, so I stand here, you know, the guy at the, at the top of that, that bump, and I'm responsible for that issue. I would encourage anyone to go look at our website and look at our source control program. We have a rigid control program coming in. I was in the office today, and it was nice to see her turn a car away, that for the reason it didn't have the proper paperwork. But whether it's, whether it's scrap theft, whether it's material inspection coming in, we have inspection at the scale, we have inspection as the operators are all trained, we have inspection throughout the process to make sure that doesn't happen, and we, we do it religiously for a number of reasons, and explosions are, are just one of many potential risks that we face in our, in our industry, things that are coming in the door. So I think we have a pretty good handle on, on the opportunity that's there for us to be better all around. We are benchmarking now on stormwater. It's a big part of our source control program, things that come in in the scrap every day, old cans of liquid, old bottles, closed cylinders. There's nothing worse than a small propane tank to the, to the seal mill. So I think we have what's, what's available. I'd be happy, I think we've presented it before. It's out there on the web, and I, I'm here to answer any questions anyone has as to the effectiveness of that program.
And yes, I'm guessing in addressing Mr. Tunick's concerns about the location, I think you've addressed that, that you would research that location thing. The other thing that he was concerned about was possibly another entrance to the facility off of Monroe Avenue as opposed to off of Washington Avenue?
I'll have to turn that to David. I, it came up twice in the previous conversations, and it was deemed it wasn't a feasible entrance, but I'm, to be honest, I can't tell you why. Let me ask David Snyder to.
Absolutely.
So to address the issue of the Monroe Street, that's the street that's directly east of the yard, the city street, and we're using that presently a lot of, is that, excuse me, am I incorrect? Okay. Yes, I'm sorry, from the south. We're using that street now for a lot of our trucks. They're coming in out of that, and a lot of our traffic's using it every day, and we're trying to encourage them to use that somewhat. But again, you have a lot of traffic now and construction on Norfolk Avenue. It's kind of limiting that a little bit, but we definitely use that street today as part of our traffic control.
Thank you.
I know we're talking about doing creative paving district. Obviously, we established that tonight. Now, in case of that not happening, which there could be a strong likelihood of that, is there a plan B? I know we're talking about fifty-twenty or five-twenty, you know, we're talking about keeping the dust down and stuff. What would be the long-term, obviously, if that paving district doesn't go through?
Again, as the concern was, is using the Monroe Street, and also approaching the neighbor with this approval this evening, approaching the industrial neighbor to the south and a little bit west that's being used right now, is using that piece of property right there for another entrance. So in fact, we'd have three entrances into the property.
Being sitting here tonight, listening to different things, I think, you know, obviously, there's hours and dust, really being, let me address one thing on, on the traffic. The one issue about the streets that we're talking about, I'm all in favor of having fifty-two-twenty go through and have it done. If Monroe's a viable entrance and exit, we can encourage it. This is a facility that's open. It's public streets. I don't know how to tell somebody, you can only come through one, how I could ever control that, or how I could ever get them to follow anyone. We can encourage use of alternative routes, and I actually didn't know we use Monroe Street, so I learned something here this evening as well. But I, I think that the, the goal is to make sure that we're the best solution, if as the city and Alter and the neighbors work together, say, can we encourage? If we're using our trucks one way, doesn't mean I can't encourage the others, but I don't know that I can tell you that I can tell them what city street to drive on. I'm not sure that's my.
I understand. I understand. Thank you very much.
Shane, were you asking more as an alternate to the paving? I mean, could we armor coat it? Could we asphalt it?
Exactly.
Could we asphalt it as a Plan B?
Daily, right now, we're watering that roadway ourselves, use our own equipment about every two to three hours. We have reached out to some local companies about getting like an armor coating, like your suggestion, the Vexel water. They have brought it to us, and it really hasn't suppressed dust like what I would think. First, the cost, what's it going to cost us doing it? They're talking about $1,500 or $5500 to use it one time and you're done. That's one of the issues. Like I say, I'm all for getting that paving, that's going to lead us to state board.
But kind of conclude your presentation. Mr. Tunick, would you like to address any of these things?
I guess one, you know, we're talking about the hours and the dust situation, and again, as the representatives from Alter presented, you know, it's the same as you trying to tell me which way I have to go to work. You know, it's public streets out there. I guess you can't tell citizens that they can't use Washington Avenue to get to their destination that they want to go to.
No, I'm sure that's been...
Other than load limits on it, and so I don't think that that's, you know, it's the same as if I tried to tell you, "You have to go around to Eisenhower Avenue to get to South End to Norfolk."
Yep.
You know, it's a matter of being reasonable, and the decision on paving Washington Avenue is a decision that, you know, we're placing it forward. I guess if the citizenry down there or the owners down there decide that it's not something that they want to do, that's a choice that's being made by those citizens and people that way. So I don't think that that's a viable argument. You know, I guess the important thing then, too, when we talk about hours of operation, you know, if you remember here, I remember hearing on the radio, it wasn't this last Sunday, but the Sunday before that, Nebraska Public Power was encouraging people to shut down all their non-necessary electrical items because we were that close to brownouts. You know, if we're going to say shut down, then we at least have to be able to say, "Okay, we're going to let you operate a little bit." I mean, it's a choice of whether we want to all sweat it on out, or we want to be reasonable about the situation, so...
Now, my concern is not so, I understand about that, because actually, I went through my shop, and I go through the MPD, and they got a government program where I put holding the lighting system in my shop, and they actually helped pay for it, actually reimbursed me. My thing, question is, though, is I'm not trying just one specific route in there. Well, I was getting after, you have two or three, actually, three routes in there. Now, main reason I've come up here is the railroad. Now, are they for this pavement or not for the pavement? Because, you know, they're going to have to fork out some money for this. Are they involved in it? Or, I've never even heard anything about the railroad so far. Just because of the fact is, is, you know, there's boundary lines, and whoever has a boundary line's going to have to pay for it. You know, and the sad part is, if they ever paved my street, that's gravel, and yeah, I don't like it, but I sure don't want to pay all the taxes that I have to because I own three quarters of the block. But the point is, the railroad owns, very well, all the way from what, First Street, Clearwood to Washington, and then on. So I didn't know, are they going to be stopping you guys? Are they going to be interfering? Are you going to put asphalt, concrete? You know, asphalt don't last anyway, but that's, I just want to bring up the issue of that, okay? Because I didn't hear anything about them.
Well, I thank you for that, and that's what Mr. Smith was trying to describe to you when we described the remonstrant proceedings, what could be taking place to prevent that paving district from going through. So we just all have to wait for that. None of us have those answers at this point in time.
No. I just like to bring it up. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Fitzgerald, do you have any comments to make?
We have no further comments.
Thank you.
That's the reason I brought that up, the paving district, because the railroad does have a lot of that problem. That's why I'm just kind of rolling the dice.
I guess the one other thing that still really hasn't been finalized or discussed in totality is the fire suppression, and Trent, could you address that at all?
Scott.
Or Scott?
Yeah, I can, if Scott doesn't want to. We have addressed this. Most of our fire side of things, we try to prevent them, obviously. So the prevention side of it is huge, and prevention does work, and we all know that. And so we will be working with them once we know exactly what kind of machines, what kind of safety equipments on those machines, what kind of power, what emergency shutdowns are, and there's a full gamma of emergency ingress and egress out of there. Obviously, we don't want to place taxpayers' fire truck that costs, you know, a lot of money in a place or situation where we're going to damage or ruin it. So we will be working with them on all those situations. We've looked at the water supply, we have multiple hydrants around there, we have them located, and this is all stuff that we haven't worked with Alters yet at all, really, on paper, because we don't know exactly where the machines are sitting and exactly how it's all going to lay out, other than on a piece of paper for right now.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess that brings us, Public Hearing, to a conclusion, brings us to a point where we need a proposal from the council. Have an option in making recommendations here. You have three options. One of the things would be to reverse the version. Second would be to affirm the resolution, and the third would be to modify the resolution. So do I have a consideration from the council?
Your Honor, I would move that we affirm the resolution number 2012-28 as presented from the Planning Commission. Version B.
Have a motion to affirm. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I guess the only discussion I have with that is because, obviously, I live in that ward. How, I mean, you obviously say you were very open to looking at different locations for the, if there's a possibility, move it. I mean, after this passes, nothing says that we can come back and say, hey, you know, I mean, how do we know that that's, we've taken you by your word, obviously, but how do we know that's your full intent is to make sure that if there is an opportunity and we can move this further away from the residents, that they are, you know, obviously going to have a little better quality of life than if it's right up against the back door, so...
I guess the only thing I can tell the council is that we will make every effort, we'll have you available if you're involved enough in the construction permit side of it, they'll see it, they'll be part of it, the fire department will be part of it, as far as locating it. It only fits one way on the property, really, but the slide in a few feet is really not going to make a huge addition to us or to the neighbors, but we'd be happy to...
Well, I appreciate that, and, you know, I guess the big thing that really sticks in my mind about the entire situation down there is that, hey, this was a, I mean, they require railroad siding, they move product by rail. This was a railroad yard. It was a railroad yard prior to you folks taking it over, I believe, in 1958. It was a switching yard. It was an industrial area. That's, you know, especially when we get outside of just what's going on here, that's why you discourage residential areas from developing next to existing, and I stress the word, existing industrial areas. That's a rail yard. I mean, I don't know that we can go to Nebraska Central and say, "You can't blow your horn at 2:00 in the morning either." So, I mean, those are things, when I buy a piece of property in that area, that, you know, I buy what's there also, so...
We still seem to be discussing the location of the shredder, and I guess that, have you folks taken any efforts to determine exactly what is the closest distance to a residence from the proposed side of the shredder?
1,200 feet.
1,200 feet would be the closest residence to the present location of the shredder. Thank you. Any further discussion? Please vote on the resolution.
All council members voting in the affirmative, resolution 2012-28, version B is adopted, affirming the conditional use permit.
Thank you for all concern. And here's just on the agenda item number 43. Correction, yeah, 43, the consideration, consideration of resolution 2012-25, approving the hard-surfacing waiver for Warner Garage.
I'll make a motion to take resolution 2012-25 off the table.
Motion and a second. Do I have a vote?
All council members voting in the affirmative.
I think we're done, right?
No, that was taking it off the table. Now, we need to consider the resolution.
Okay, we've got the tabling resolved. Now, I'd like to introduce the resolution. We had the resolution tabled, we took it off the table now, so it's back on the agenda.
I'd move approval of the, or can, is that a resolution? Or approval of the, of the...
2012-25.
That's what I'm looking for, the number. 2012-25. I got the name wrong, but I couldn't find the number.
The motion is to approve the resolution 2012-25. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Where the conditional use was addressed, I mean, there were some changes that we're going to make in that, maybe we should address that.
On this hard-surfacing waiver, I believe, thinking back that they were going to work together on that, they were going to contact each other, and I guess I don't know the results of that, so I don't know if they want to speak to that or not, but...
Weren't we going to put a timeframe in there? That was part of statute.
It's in there.
Right, but I just thought that we should say that publicly so that everyone knows. That was the main concern, that's why we tabled it. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that we addressed that.
I got a question. Warner's here. Jim, are you comfortable with what resolution states?
I don't know. I don't have much choice. I, the 10-year, I have, you know, 10 years, I guess...
The one that is written in there is 10 years or as...
Maybe Clint can address that for us, because I know we've discussed a little bit about the fact that we've got a 10-year, but then at any certain time, it can be readdressed. Maybe we can explain that a little bit.
Yeah, and as a practical, is that better? As a practical matter, the statute addresses a couple of things in regard to that. It addresses the 10-year requirement, which wasn't, Councilman Coys, correct, it wasn't in there when you were looking at it last time. It also provides for the 10-year requirement, and I think it would probably be safe to say that 10 years from tonight, this matter probably won't be on the agenda. I mean, what, as a practical matter, what's happened, I can't, I think in talking with other staff, we're not aware of one of these ever coming back, where after the 10 years, it just continues until there's something that, until such time as it precipitates something else. So, you know, it'd just be out there unless the issue raises itself by other development in the neighborhood, or maybe more than likely, property that you own that you've sold to somebody else that has some process that's not competing, not competing with. The ordinance, which is set forth in 27-351, also talks about if there is a change in ownership or occupancy of the premises, it would require a new waiver. As I understand it, you've got this, you've got the storage units out there, there's not going to be a lot of activity coming to and from there, but if you turned it into, used all the garage doors that you're going to have there and turned it into a mechanic's place where you're doing automobile repair and you've got lots of coming and going, that different use would give rise to a consideration of whether that's still appropriate. So as a practical matter, depending upon what happens out there, the resolution, the way it is, now meets the provisions of the code and gives some flexibility to react to changes that may develop in the neighborhood or that you might make in your operation. And with the plans that you've articulated in the Planning Commission and whatever here, as a practical matter, that's probably never going to come about, unless you go off in a totally different direction because you determine it's to your benefit to do so. So that's kind of where I think, where I think we're at with the resolution, is before the council.
Any further questions? Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 2012-25 is adopted.
Well, if that brings us to the end of our agenda, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor. A second.
We are adjourned.
Dave was happy he finally got to make a motion again, so...
We survived.